But you know it's a you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours kind of system, right?
Right, but here's the thing.
So you think the Democratic Party cares about black people? Believe it or not, Rex, I think that tweet is part of the problem. Do you feel like we could have addressed this homeless issue much sooner? You have to speak a word, make it a good one. Welcome back to The Word. I'm your host Jackie Ray. I am still doing this election coverage. It is so important for you to be well informed so you can make a great decision, or at least a decision you can be confident about when you go to the polls in March. So I'm staying with that and I have another candidate here for you today, Cristiano Pinto. He is running for District Six. I'm so excited to have him here. I had a chance to chop it up with him a little bit at the Candidates Brunch this past weekend. He has a lot to share with you and I'm so glad you're here. Thank you for being on the show.
No problem. Thank you for having me. So my name is Cristiano Pinto. I am born and raised in Angola and I came to the United States 24 years ago. So and all this time I've been living in Long Beach.
Okay, so Long Beach was your first stop?
Yes.
How did that happen? How was it your first stop? Usually people go when they're coming from another country, they have a couple of stops before they get here.
Realistically, I stopped in New York. My intention was to come to Long Beach because I was about to, I wasn't rolling Cal State Long Beach.
Okay.
Right, for my, for my PhD. Because I finished, I graduated in Angola as a physics science. And then I went to Russia for scholarship and then I graduated with a masters in, in fine arts and education.
Okay, so we got physics, fine arts and education. That's a pretty diverse background.
And then, and then also I finished, I have one more unit to go, one, one unit to go, to finish a trade construction technology.
So are you going to use these all together or why did, why is it such a diverse background?
I, I use, I like a hands-on. I like a trade.
So this whole time, the whole time you've lived in Long Beach, have you lived in District Six the entire time?
No, I live the, I live the, um, right after Orange.
Okay.
For about four years and then I live here in District Six about 15 years.
Okay, so a long time.
Right, long time.
So what are some of the things that you've seen, living in District Six, that have either gone poorly or they've gone in a very positive direction?
Oh, I'm glad you asked that. I'm glad you asked that because imagine if you walk in District Six, you ask any residents, what you think about or what are the problems in District Six? They will tell you. Well, I will say this, Sixth District has a lot of problems. Start up, if you look statistic, we are the poorest districts in Long Beach. Fifty plus percent are poor. It, it is a lot, a lot.
A lot, yeah, for sure.
Yes, a lot. Majority of the people in Long, that means in Sixth District are, are poor. That's one. Parking, this is other problems. People then, when actually I went knock the doors to get a signature for petition, people didn't want to sign it because they told me, uh, why I will to sign is another candidate that not gonna do anything because we upset of the things going on right now. The leaders in our district doesn't take phone calls, that means they hang up the phones, means when they call, they don't have answers and the questions they basically left behind. They leave question, they have comment, they have questions, but unfortunately, always they tell them that we're gonna come back, we're gonna call you back and they never called back. So this is another issue that really bother me is the safetiness. I'm talking about homeless, crime. And also the vision zero, action vision zero.
Tell us a little bit about action vision zero.
Action vision zero, in 2016, there is a plan that start up by previous mayor, Robert Garcia, that eliminates the traffic deaths and injuries in the district. So imagine we are in 2024, but nothing been done. If I, if elected, 90 days, I will put the action plan or revise that plan or even bring that plan in action to make sure that the problem is solved. And then I've seen it in my district, a lot of accidents, a lot of.
I've seen it too. I have, I have, I have a lot of friends that live in District Six and I, and I feel every time I go over there, there's some sort of traffic accident.
Right, so everything has to do with the leadership. The leadership, I think is a time to leadership to stand up and do what they been elected for. What, what the people in the community elect them to do. And unfortunately, we don't see it. If I'm not elected, it means the situation is gonna be there. Gonna continue, gonna roll over to more years.
I, I get calls, like I said, I have a lot of friends that live in District Six and I tell them anytime they meet somebody that says, hey, I want to talk to the press about something, give my number out and I feel like they've done that because I get countless calls specifically from District Six about the current leadership out there. And so I'm not surprised to hear you say that. But with that though, I, I do wonder sometimes in talking to other city council members, it seems like the squeaky wheel gets the oil. So the more that the constituents are on someone's back, the more that city, that city council leader is apt to act. So do you feel like it's, it could be a possibility that maybe the constituents in District Six just haven't been vocal enough or is it the leadership or is it a combination of both?
Well, I will say everything started from the leadership. Because the leadership is the, the fundamental elements inside to really push and make things, uh, 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 take the awareness to, to the team. So the leadership is the person elected to represent the people.
Right.
So even though if the people not pressure the leadership or doesn't make a calls, doesn't mean the problem is not there. The problem is still there. So I think is everything has to do with the leadership.
And I know the homelessness isn't just a Long Beach thing. I know it's not just a downtown thing. It's a nationwide thing, but I also get a lot of calls about the homeless issue, specifically in District Six and that being a danger not only to people, but also property. I know you have a plan that you would like to implement if you were elected to address that. Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Well, I'm glad you asked. It is, uh, and humans see people live in the streets. And even though right now it's raining, wondering where those peoples are, where they are in the rain, right? In the rain. I, I support in many ways homeless clothes, even money. But my plan, I'm looking to, this is a, is a broad and national situation. But we have to deal with this locally. We have to deal with the local situation. What I look at is what they need. Homeless means less home. What they need, they need a home. They need, they just need a stable place to live. And then I said again, stable place to live. That's what they need. Now, how they can, how can they get that? Is affordable homes, affordable housing. What I will do, it is that if you look at the city, I'm not sure in order to really understand what the policy is in place and then go from that and eliminate those policy that works, doesn't work and then support those policy that works, I have to be inside and see it. So for me, there is a possibility to create a fund, for example. Even though if it exists already, maybe not working because we still see homeless in the street, right? So fund specifically for homeless that we can use that fund to support homeless and ever need. Government has the power to transform certain properties to use for units for affordable living. So, oh, that is an eminent domain.
Right.
Okay, eminent domain, basically if the city of Long Beach has that policy in place or has that law, that's also, uh, the city of Long Beach can use it. Why we cannot use it? Imminent domains would be a good thing to use. It means we can look into property that's, that basically not function or the owner doesn't have ways to keep up or means in many ways we can see that and converting to affordable homes or units for, for homeless.
So I, I've worked a lot with Jeff Levine and the Long Beach Rescue Mission. And one of the things that I've learned from him is like, sometimes it's going to be difficult to say that housing first is the answer, especially when you have people who are chronic homeless, meaning they've been on the streets for several years, some people over a decade. Those people are not going to transition into housing quickly because that's not a lifestyle that they're used to. So we need to address that, number one. Number two, even if we do provide housing for some people, some people are gonna do great with that because that's literally what they need. They need that stability to get over to that next hump. Other people are gonna need services for like mental illness, drug abuse, things of that nature. So if we start with the housing first model, how do we address all these other issues simultaneously?
Well, what I believe is that I think the only way somebody can succeed is to have a stable, stable place to live. That is point key number one. Because in any given moment, anybody can become homeless anyway.
Right.
And imagine, so if we start up with the creating affordable housing means we will tackle down the situation at first place before it even gets worse. Then place and homeless that need the resources as a mental illness or drug additions and then give the resources and institution that they can support them. I mean, I think situation still can, can be solved. What I think is that everything, all of those issue need collective leadership work. I will bring leaders from a federal level, state level, agencies, county agencies, um, community leaders, those nonprofit organization that's already dealing with the homelessness. And discuss, bring solution, discuss, put, address the issue so that we can find the solution and then solve the problem, put action plan and solve the problem.
I, I agree with your point on leadership. Leadership does have to step up and get it done. I, not too long in the distant past, unfortunately, we had a situation where little Eric Brown was shot and killed in the sixth district. Um, myself and other leaders in the community were out. I was of course doing a story, but we were doing the safe patches and then there was a vigil for him as well. And the current leadership of District Six was dead silent for the most of that time. So not addressing the violence in that area, literally everyone came out, including Al Austin from District Eight. He had something to say and her excuse was, I couldn't address this earlier because I was at work. So I want to ask you, what do you do for a living? And are you going to be able to balance your job with the needs of the community in District Six?
Oh, yes, yes, because I, I am always a passionate with the community. I, I am a community advocate for years, whether, whether abroad or in the United States. So I lead at this moment, for example, big organization called Angola Community in a Diaspora.
Oh, nice.
What is that? If you look, you check, you check on YouTube, you will see. I brought in leaders of every party that was in 2000, 2002, which means that in Angola until 2021, we didn't have right to vote. So I created the platform to have debates with among all Angolians in a diaspora. You name where, can be in China, can be in Japan, can be in Korea, can be any part of Europe. So we fight for. And in conclusion, now we have the right to vote.
So you, you went door to door. What's some of the feedback that you've received thus far about, aside from the parking, the Martin Luther King Park, which I'm sure you've heard about, the homeless? Are there any other issues that you heard about when you canvassed and went door to door?
Too many issues, businesses that are closing the doors. Because some of the, they're trying to remain open just barely because they don't have customer. Again, is community values here. Now also, they ask me or they thank me to show up. They said, thank you to show up because nobody came here to tell us anything. We even know what's gonna go. And that's why in my site, I make it careful. By the way, I like to tell you that the site is up already. You see, I don't know if you've seen it.
I saw it on your Instagram, yeah.
Right, even though it's not completely, but it take a time, I just will add step by step. So people complain about park, businesses and injuries in, in the city, accidents and in all of those situations, crime, okay? And that concerns them because their property value means in risk, in risk. And then that is what, if I elected, I will look into those each, one by one and bring the community, actually bring the community together and have a forum to discuss and listen to all the issue, all problems that community have. And then really create a long agenda and starting to select which one I'm gonna do first, which one I will take action plan first and then get it done as soon as possible.
One of the things that, that I was a little concerned about is as far as like your campaign was the fact that most of the people that talk to me, and they definitely are hungry for leadership that they feel like they can talk to, that takes them seriously and is there for them and that they are seen. I know, I know typically around this time, around election, everybody wants to have like an open house where people can talk, but, but that doesn't happen outside of an election season. So I think people are definitely and specifically in your district, hungry for change, but they didn't know about you. So do you feel like, why, I guess my question is, why did you start really hitting the ground and, and letting people know about you kind of a little later than, instead of coming right out the gate, guns blazing and letting people know, hey, if you really want to change, I'm here?
Yeah, I'm glad that you asked that, but I like to, first of all, I like to apologize for those looking forward to hear from me and, and even talk to me. I will love it. I will love to come to you. I will love it. Means come to address whatever issue, hear your issue and, and hear from you, your support, what you wanted me to do as far as I represent you. So the campaign basically started January 1st, right? And through all those days, the process itself is not an easy process. Okay, it's not an easy process. And I started putting a foot in the ground, definitely a little bit late. It's the first time I'm running. So doesn't means I may, people may can say, oh, he's a, he doesn't have experience, but not necessarily. I have a great and big and talented vision. I'm a very visionary, right? And that, that tackle to my experience gave me the ability, the vision, the vision actually translated to experience. So I will do whatever it takes from now on. And then actually Sunday, I went, we went door to door. Give us some message. Some people already know about hundreds of homes we touched, but still a lot more to get it done. So I'm getting there. I'm getting there. If you are out there and, and then feel like you haven't heard from me, it's not because I don't want to or I don't care, but I'm hungry too. So take the message to you and show how I'm interested in solving your problem. Means minimize your problem or even listen to your concerns.
I mean, as far as your background, you definitely have the background because you worked with government in.
Oh, I did, right?
Yeah, so you definitely have the background. I don't think, and you, that's definitely well documented on your site and I love that as well. Uh, I think my concern was it, it's, people are hungry right now for a, a type of change. So, but, but with that, now that you're kind of, like you said, the, the campaign started in January, but you know, it's a process. Um, usually, and I ask this question to everybody. I know a lot of people, they decide to run because of something that they've seen and they've just had enough. Is that the case for you? And what did you see that you were like, you know what, I have to put my, my foot in this race?
It is. It is because I'm a feel, I feel like I'm disappointed with the leadership. Because I realize that we can do, they can do more. I realize that there is no need, no reason to have 50% plus poor poverty in the district. Doesn't look, basic things, basic. We don't have warning lights. Warning lights, it is important to save lives. This is a part of what we talking about. Means the vision zero, means we don't have it, right? So it is, if I elected, that is one of, one of the, the things that has to be in my agenda in 90 days. Yeah, we have schools, we have businesses around, means people all the time I see crossing the street. Yeah, and in a hope that the driver will see them, but none, that's not how should be. Yeah, we have as a leader, have a responsibility to really protect the citizens, to protect neighborhood. This is what I protect, that's what I will do, protect our neighborhood's interest. I will look into the lunch of kids' lunch in schools. I will look, yes, I will. I would like to, if I'm elected, I will look into that. Make sure that kids have the best meal, have, means I seen the kids that complained and said, hey, I'm still hungry, but they just had a lunch.
Right.
I'm still hungry. So what we expect the best success on that kids, okay, impacted the future. And the future has to be brighter to them and it has to be now. We have to invest now so that we get the results later. We can't wait until the time is right, when the leaders think that the time is right because I'm leaving the office and then you can do whatever. No, we have to start to think straight. Start to not vote for those leaders that not going to do the job or not doing the job.
You and I had a candid conversation at the Candidates Brunch and like I, like I think we've kind of touched on several times in this conversation, I do think that people specifically in District Six are quite frustrated. However, I do know that people are creatures of habit. So as much as they are frustrated, at least in what they've expressed to me, how are you gonna combat the, y'all forgive the pun, but this is what my dad always calls it, it's the devil you know. Sometimes people are just going to vote for the devil they know because they don't want to experience something that they just don't know if it will or will not be worse. So what would you say to those people who they recognize the name of the current city council person in, in District Six and they just feel, you know what, maybe I am dissatisfied with her, but I know who she is, I know what she's about and I know this is the way it's gonna be. It can't get worse than this. What would you say to them?
Well, I will say this, better later than never, right? So if I'm here for you and then I express my interest, means I thank enough you to see that. Just come talk to me. Come talk to me. Let's have a conversation. And then I will show me how passionate I am to really take this community another level. And then it means I, I, I am a fighter, okay? Because I don't have nothing to lose. I have to gain. What I gain is support the community, the people that I love. I can accept that the people have to accept to continue or to accept to be poor for the rest of their lives. They don't have to accept that. Well, I grew up in a poor community, here I am.
What part does a city play in making sure that that poverty doesn't continue?
Key number one, commitment of the leadership. Leadership have to commit with that. Leadership have to feel a responsibility that he or she assume to do. Now, if there is no leadership that will ask questions, there is no leadership that can lessen the concerns of the residents. There is no leadership that you bring unification with the leaders in the community or leader from agencies or leader from state, federal agencies, whatever entity is to address the issues that the community have, there not gonna be solution. There not gonna be solution because when, here is the point, even myself, I starting to see right now the system of endorsement. So the system of endorsement, in my opinion, basically means it doesn't fulfill the democratic fairness, okay? Because means every endorser, they can endorse who they want to. I agree. Yeah, I'm a full agree. But I disagree when endorser endorses someone but doesn't even give opportunity to all the candidates or doesn't give opportunity to listen to all the candidate. So that tells me there that there is some sort of a commitment. There is some sort of a bridge that they cannot break it. So no point to listen to anybody else.
I mean, that's a, that's a great point and that kind of brings me to my next question too, because it is kind of, um, again, with all due respect to the, our political system, it is a good old boys' club and if they want in, who they want in. So even if you do get in, there is that possibility that the current leadership is there because it's, that's the current leadership that other people in leadership want to be there. So you would have to fight again, once you're elected. Are you prepared to not only fight to be elected, but once you are elected, to continue to fight to not only earn your spot, but to make sure that the people in the sixth district have a voice that can continually be heard in city council?
Right, that means against, with, with, means with my opinion, I will say this. Right, that means against, with with means with my opinion, I will say this. The political system, it is a platform that means there is no interest to let new people come in.
Right.
Okay, so the design that really to create obstacles for who wanna break the cycle. Okay, now for me, I will break the cycle if I'm elected. If something that I feel not going to support my community, not going to put plus or minimize the poverty in my my community, means what is up, what will be interest for?
But you know, it's a you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours kind of system, right?
Right, but here's the thing, you can, you can, let's say, one thing is scratch your back harder. And then other thing is crush your back soft, but you let go the bad things. I can, you can crush my back, but I will say, look, regardless what, this gotta be done this way. Gotta be done this way. We have to put the warning lights. You can convince me say, oh, no, we cannot put the orange light because it will cost money. No, we have to put the cost, I mean, the warning lights. We have to um put in action the vision zero. We have to really look into affordable housing. Like I said, being inside, I will see if there is a policy that really embrace the eminent domain for affordable housing. So because that gives me luggage really to see where, which direction we can go and what to make affordable housing. I will go knock the doors, make calls all day long to reach out to the leaders, whether it's federal, a federal level, state level, county level, and bring leaders of the communities, agencies. Will sit down and set design action plan to make that work. I will be, I will be, they will be the captain. I will be the boat.
I like that, okay. That's how it should be, the, I think the people should be the captain. And 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 city council should be the boat to make sure that floats. I like that.
I will take you anywhere you want, but you drive me. You tell me, I have a problem in this community. I have this, I have this, we have this, we, okay, how we gonna solve that? Oh, we can do this, we can do that, because I believe in people's opinion. I believe in people's ability to think, because they don't want to leave it. When I said, for example, I will look into education and very aspect, such as the teachers. Teachers in the classroom, they must have a condition. In my opinion, they must have working conditions. They must have a work condition. Because when the teacher feel comfortable in the good environment, that the children, the kids also will feel that. If the teacher come in and sit wherever they give to, to sit, to sit down, whatever table shared gift to, because they can, because they trying to do the best they can to keep that job. Come on. So this is where I am running to really sit down with the union, labor union, education means um um teacher union leaders to discuss and see what is the avenue we can do better. Because they don't tell me there is no money. There is a deficit, but doesn't mean there is no money. Two different things.
Yeah, I think we know that, given that we're spending fifty million dollars on a musical venue, but I digress.
Right. We have to really embrace or realize that the human not difference than anybody else. Any human, no difference, right? So the difference is some, they are more greater, greeters, greeters than others. I am probably more grief and probably all the people, they will put, bring more comments. I will bring more grief and then other people will bring more excuses. Right?
So tell, give the, before we close out, I just want you to take maybe a minute or two and really just look the people in the eye and tell them how they can reach you if they do have questions, why they should vote for you and the importance of voting. Because that's the other thing that I've kind of seen as I'm talking to people. People are becoming disenchanted with the whole process of voting because they think nothing's going to change. So if you could address those three points, just talk to the community and let them know who you are and what you believe.
Well, again, is your choice. If you choose to continue live the way we live today, the way we live now is your choice. But I guarantee you, if you pick this choice, you're not going to see the light in the tunnel too soon because you're gonna wait for more years to come.
Christina, thank you so much for joining. It's been a pleasure talking to you, not only today, but I really enjoyed sitting down with you and having a a few minutes to talk to you during the um candidate's brunch. That was great to have a one on one in person. Um I would invite you guys to really take him up on that and and really sit down and talk to him, learn his politics, learn who he is as a person. I think you'll find his background is fascinating. Um and that might be just new eyes and it might be new perspective that District Six really needs because District Six is drastically struggling. I want you to remember that as you go to the polls. Also, make sure you check out lbpost.com to see our compare your candidates. We're gonna have some debates. Again, I'm going to get as many um candidates, people who are campaigning on this show. So make sure you follow us right here on The Word. Once again, I'm Jackie Ray. And remember, if you have to speak a word, make it a good one. We'll see you next time.